I don't know.
We need for finance committee and then they do want to hold it session even if it's a brief one. So Rachel, I know you've put a lot of time in preparation into this and I believe you have a handout.
I do. Everyone has that already, a handout. And I will try and keep as brief as possible. As we know, special education is not brief, but for all purposes, we will try. So when we blanket special education, a lot of times we go with IEPs, we talk about 504s, and we talk about gifted. That is not necessarily the case. They fall under three different chapters. Chapter 14 hits special education. Those are the ones that are eligible through an evaluation. And those are the ones that are guided by IDA law back in 2004, which hasn't been renewed or revised since 2004. And it's essentially the same law since 1975, with a few changes here and there. Most of this for the budget items, for those who like to look at the budget, it's really all like your 1,200 items with a few exceptions. This is where your accommodations, related services, and special design instruction. Special design instruction, we know as special education classes. Without the IEP, you're not able to take advantage of those courses, such as pull-out or other supports we'll talk about. Additionally, very expensive, as we know. It's a very expensive, with very some, if not limited, funding. With chapter 15, you have these 504 service plans. In order to qualify for a 504, you have to have a disability and it has to impact your life. The guidance for that is very vague and it's stuck on the rehabilitation act in 1973 is where the guidance comes from. But again, that's very vague, doesn't have as many tight knit rules as IDA does, but still is the law, still disability and still protected act. This is considered regular education, so all of those items fall under the 1110 budget line. This is where related services and accommodations come into play, not specially designed instruction. And accommodations meaning extra timeline assignment, take your test in a separate room, having extra planners, extra time to come in late if you have medical issues, related services such as occupational therapy, counseling, things of that nature. Can be expensive depending on the need, because also too, you can have nursing services. It could require one-to-one nursing services for your medical. And that is where those things get expensive. A nurse, daily nurse can cost anywhere from $100 a day to $300 a day, depending on the need of the student. And there is no funding for that. And chapter 16 is where we talk about gifted, again eligible through an evaluation report. This is guided by the chapter four PA school code, oftentimes, which chapter four falls under the curriculum guidelines. And that's a lot of times where Mr. Rantich comes into play. This is a specific line item 1243. And this is specially designed instruction above what is currently offered, above what is in the general education. So it really focuses on the student strengths. Typically, the secondary level, you see a lot of districts tend to phase out GIPs because there's a natural break, there's a natural progression of services, where AP classes come into play, dual enrollment classes come into play. You have those acceleration naturally occurring in the school district. So a lot of districts tend to start to phase those out, but it's all based on goals, it's all based on the team and what the needs are. And again, this is, there's no funding, but it can get expensive when it comes to field trips for transportation, extra courses or whatever the team determines outside of the school setting.
Rachel?
Yeah.
Chapter 14, chapter 15, chapter 16, what does that refer to?
Federal law. It all falls under the federal.
No, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. That's based by any public school code.
So those are probably.
So you look at 1401 through whatever, 1501 and then 16. But they, with the exception of gifted, which is only state, 14 and 15 really are parroting and based upon, like the Rehab Act of 73 and the IDEAA and IEIOS and everything else that goes with it. Rachel was absolutely correct that it hasn't changed much since 1975.
And the, while he said gifted is not, is it the state qualification for gifted kind of falls under the district's own matrix and is board approved and it's, each district has their own matrix of what that qualification is. It's through, you have one window through an IQ and then the other path is if you don't meet that general IQ qualification is a series of other criteria that you have to meet a certain set of points.
All this stuff used to be IQ based on, it's now expanded to, which Rachel, I'm sure we've gotten more into. When I first started doing this, all you had to do was look at the IQ score and replace the kid based on.
Yeah, and that's not so much the case as now.
Not the way we do it today, isn't it?
It's a multidisciplinary evaluation is what they call it. So it looks at multiple factors, multiple facets. So again, special educate, I quote that special education because as we know, it's not just special education, IEP-related. It's the 504s and GIPs. Chapter 14, the IEP focuses on the whole child, academic, behavioral, emotional, social. You have to look at all of those needs of the student, all of those needs of their, that student's educational environment. And that educational environment starts to dip. They step at the bus stop to the time they get back home. That includes extracurricular, that includes throughout their entire day. And so those are things we have to look at and make sure we're meeting those needs. Chapter 15 focuses on the disability and how it impacts their day-to-day functions. Do they need extra time for that assignment? So it's more so just on how that disability affects that. Chapter 16 focuses on areas of strength, whereas 14 and 15 look at need, look at areas that we need to help support and build. Chapter 16 looks at areas of strength. How can we accelerate? How can we enrich? Because a student has a really strong presence in say math or science, so how do we enrich that?
Now Rachel, a student could fall under all three of those.
Correct.
So which, like, does one precedents or like, how do you?
So 14 and 16 are where the precedence comes into play and 504s will follow. So if you have, a lot of times we'll have students that will qualify for a 504 and then throughout the time they get evaluated and they end up through a GIP or an IEP, that 504 gets folded into that process. So you can, and then you can have a student that hits IEP, 504, and a GIP. All of that is. The IEPs, if you have that case, the IEP takes precedence. But all of that folds into that IEP. There's process procedures in place that meets all of those needs. That's the thing. Not every kid is a, not a one-stop shop. Not everybody fits in the same shoebox. So and that's where, that's why it's individualized. So what do we have? With all that being said, what do we have in our district for special education? We have a lot. And I, so I outlined a couple of the programs we have and where they are. Life skills and autistic support are, tend to be, they're both very similar. They're high structured, they're high intense, they are high personnel. Because in those classrooms, you have your teacher, you have a pair of professionals to help support. And you may have a couple pair of professionals to help support those students. The needs of those students that are in those classes are higher. You have a more intense and a lower number of students that are eligible, able to be in those classrooms. So the max you can have in autistic support classroom is eight. Max that you can have in a set, life skills classroom at the elementary is 12, the secondary is 15. Of course, there's a play in numbers and formulas and such, but those are where your high needs are. We have a program at, for life skills at Carnegie and the high school. For autistic support, we have at both elementaries under Carnegie and Crafton. Now, a lot of districts, based on need and how many you have a program and what the district's needs are, a lot of, some districts will actually merge programs to make them more cost efficient. Because a lot of them tend to cross over. We have a lot of students that may be either primary support is autistic support, but they also get some benefits from the life skills at Carnegie. So you see a lot of that crossover. Where particularly the autistic support comes into play is social communication and really focusing on those autism behaviors that can really feed the students of learning.
But those behaviors don't end when a kid goes from elementary school to high school. So how is that addressed in high school?
So at the high school level, we have not had, because again autistic support, from my understanding, had opened up a couple of years ago under Dr. Mangus. So those students have not progressed up through the line yet. And I say yet. It's happening, it's going to be coming. So that's why I said, looking at what we have coming up and what we have moving out, et cetera. Every year we look and see what our numbers are looking like. And so I'll get to this at the very end, but we're always, we're going to look at, every year we look at, what do we currently have? What do we know we have moving through the lines and what do we have, what do we know we can plan for? And that's one of the things we have, looking at the secondary level, we have quite a few students that are graduating this year and quite a few coming up. Our life, we're at a point where our life skills program at our secondary level can be revised so that it can benefit both life skills and autism in that same classroom. So it's where we hit our most bang for a buck, is merging those two programs. Because the students that are going to be remaining in the life skills will benefit from an autism program as well. So those two will merge under one classroom. And then additionally, also, learning support, emotional support, and speech and language support. Learning support is focused primarily on reading, writing, oral comprehension skills, mathematics, listening. A lot of those students that qualify under specific learning disability hit this category. A lot of students under other health impairment will hit this category. But again, you can have, again, kids can hit, it's individualized. So you can have students that hit multiple levels of support, meaning academic and learning support, but also meaning some emotional support, which addresses the functional behavior and emotional, that self-regulation that some students aren't able to accommodate. We have a, we opened last year a emotional support program. We evolved our autistic support program at Crafton, because a lot of the students that we had in the autistic support program were also benefiting from emotional support. So we were able to evolve Crafton's program to accommodate those emotional support students. And then we have a program here at the high school that has been able to help us reduce the number of other district placements by meeting some of those needs. And also too, as we bring Spence back, Ms. Spunch has been an asset in helping us to create a good transition program so students are finding success. And then also speech and language support. Those are the students who meet needs for speech, articulation, social skills. There's a lot of communication skills that they're able to work through. We have a lot of students that may qualify for speech, but then they're also getting learning support. We have a lot of students that have speech services that have emotional support. Oftentimes, students that have life skill, learn life skills program or logistics support program also get speech services. As communication is also a factor.
Rachel, for learning support at the elementary school level, is it push-in or is it pull-out?
It's pull-out. Okay, due to the numbers we have, we have, at Crafton, we have two learning support teachers, K to three, four to six. And Carnegie, we have three, K to three, four, five, five and six.
And then how, how much inclusion is there? So if there's students with intellectual disability, but they're kind of high functioning, like IQ 70 and like all the costs of.
It's based on their needs and what they're able to do. So if they are, we're able to provide accommodations utilizing supplementary aid and services, such as providing pair of professional support in the regular classroom, and they're meeting success, we do that.
Okay.
So again, one of the law, tenants of the law is least restrictive environment. We hear a lot of times we talk about, again, you put three letters together and it means something in special education. So LRE, we talk about least restrictive environment. Where is that student finding their success? Finding the most success with the right supports. That's where the conversation starts when we talk placement. Where is a student able to find independent success and how can we maximize that so that they are meeting in their least restrictive environment? That's always where I tell the teacher, start there. Where can we find success? How can we meet these needs and move forward? Providing support in the least restrictive environment that is the best way. Driven by needs from the evaluation, not necessarily wants. We want the Cadillac, we always say, but the Chevy will get us there and sometimes it's even better. So again, needs drive that conversation and how we can find success.
So is the reason there are no emotional support programs at Carnegie because they don't require, there are no students that require it, or are they moved to Crafton?
They are not moved to Crafton. A lot of times we're able to provide supports in other ways. The students that we, because we, we look at the students, what we have. We have a lot of students that are in that custom needing emotional support, but they're able to meet through learning support environment and we're able to provide counseling services that kind of, that tailored to that. Yeah. So that we're not, don't have that need for to create a new position. It's just not cost-effective. We're meeting the needs, but we don't have to move them either. And that's when things with, traditionally, they had always moved students at Crafton who needed life skills, went to Carnegie. But we have a couple students that have qualified that don't meet the tenants of autistic support because they don't carry that diagnosis, but would really benefit from the autism classroom. So we've been able to revive that and kind of branch it to an autism, life skills, emotional support. So it meets up. That classroom really benefits that particular student based on the dynamics of how that room is filled. Okay. The goal is not to build a program to meet our needs, it's the goal is to build a program that meets the students' needs. We'll fit, we will fit around that. So where are the students? So these are the numbers of where everybody's at. And the numbers are the primary support, not necessarily. You can have, we have a couple of students that have autistic support and secondary life skills. We have a lot of students that are life skills, but also carry speech and language. So this is just to give total numbers of where things are. And then for the high school. So we see speech, language two. That means that's their primary support. And we have one speech pathologist that's full-time between Crafton and the high school. Whereas the other one is full-time at Carnegie based on need. And then this is where the money is, out-of-district placements. This is, can we meet the needs? Before we move to out-of-district placements, we always look at, again, the LRE, how can we meet the needs of the students? Can we meet them here? And there are some students in light of their circumstances that we are not able to accommodate all of their needs. And so that's when we, we go through the LRE process, we look at, is it something we can do here? And if not, there are some places that do it better. And can accommodate and fulfill their needs because it's just, it's too much for what we're able to do. And so this is a list of replacements we currently utilize. These are special education placements. I did not include AEBY. What AEBY means is alternative education for disruptive youth. Those are regular and special education students. Those are for disciplinary. Courteiducated and RTX. RTX are residential treatment facilities. Neither one of those, we have control over those placements. Those are decisions made outside of our control, however, we do have to pay for the education. So a monthly education cost for a courteiducated student is roughly $3,300. And we have about a handful of students that are out in various places. So we have just a basic rundown. At a minimum, IEP teams come together a minimum of once a year, if not more. Where they discuss the needs. Your teams include your teachers, administrator, related services, parents, discuss what the needs are and how can we create a plan that finds success. And what includes in the plan, I quoted, and this quotes from the law. Development recently calculated IEP to make an appropriate amount of progress in light of the child's circumstances. So that's where we decide what goals. To make an adequate yearly progress, accommodations, specially designed instruction to help find support, related services, and then also two placement. Where is the most appropriate placement to make the best in order to find success for that student? And we know we're meeting the needs. We look at progress and that progress is charted monthly or quarterly, based on the goals of the IEP. And if we find that, you know, we're not meeting that progress, we're not going to be hitting that goal, the IEP team comes back together and looks at ways, how, what do we need to add? What supports are in place? What's working, what's not working? How can we help support this student? So we don't wait till it's too late. We, and that's something we've been working on this year, has been real focused with professional development with the teachers and the administration, is making sure we're charting, we're doing our progress monitoring correctly, we're writing good goals, we're making sure that we're able to come back and meet the needs. So we go beyond academics, because a lot of times, meeting needs and it's something that you see through the student's grades. That's the first telltale sign, but how do we know we're, there's other facets beyond academics. So we utilize consultants from the IU, Wesley Family Services and the Watson Institute when necessary. And that's oftentimes addressing behavior. We also utilize, and one of the questions I know that had come up in a conversation Chris and I talked about was, you know, what outside providers do we have that we bring in? And Wesley Family Services has been able to provide us with some school-based services. We have a full-time therapist here at the high school. And if I could have three of her, I would. It's been quite the need. We, last year, we added 15 hours at Carnegie. And then this year, we added two hours a week, or sorry, 10 hours a week at Crafton. Half of it is paid for from other grant funding, such as R2D1 and Title IV additional fundings. And again, that was based on need. We saw a need at Carnegie that we needed to bring down a therapist a year and a half ago. And then we also saw that, saw how well that was working at Carnegie and saw how, what we, our needs were at Crafton, moved that over as well. All the caseloads are approximately 75% capacity, because the need is just, it's there. And they also provide outpatient therapists, which are therapists that are based out of the, here at the school, but it's all run through and paid for by the students insurance and such. So there's no cost to us, we're just providing a space.
Hey Rachel, so can you just kind of give me a little bit of a, some of the difference between somebody like Mr. Hope, a counselor, and what therapists and other folks are doing?
So they're licensed professional counselors, whereas our guidance counselors, they are able to buy those counseling services, but licensed professional counselor takes it a step further and we're able to bill those for reimbursable for access billing. So we're able to get money back through a licensed professional counselor versus a guidance counselor. Guidance counselor is not able to do the general mental therapist, because a lot of our counseling services through Wesley Family Services hit the mental health side of it. Whereas our school guidance counselors don't have that type of training.
So they still take care of other stuff or?
They do. Now, they do social services, they do provide, they do social groups. Like I know Mr. Hope at Crafton does lunch bunch. He does a second step curriculum and provides, we also added a couple of them in for, again, depending on the needs, whatnot. Individual counseling services, we also, he's also doing work with Mrs. Burleson under the caring center, which does a lot of grief counseling. And he does social groups with that as well. Like wise at Crafton, or sorry, Carnegie, and then also here at the high school, they run girl's social groups. So they do more of a group social skills, but whereas the licensed professional counselors are doing, addressing coping skills, mental, more so on the mental health side of things.
So would like Mr. Hope be like able to direct to more in-depth services if he saw a need for that? Is that kind of what he would do? Like kind of say, well, maybe if this is beyond the scope of what I can do, we need it?
Oftentimes, it's an IEP decision, and also too, we look at psychological counseling sessions as well, where we utilize a psychologist if we feel that a psych, there needs to be a school psychologist involved.
And that's the hard thing. It's sometimes just a confusion of the counselor, school counselor, school psychologist is. So our school counselor kind of deals with everyday things, like normal development and making like universal, so they can go in each classroom and just teach against bullying and what are good social skills and maybe have a group where it's like a second level of kind of intervention. But then the school psychologist is working with kids who might have diagnoses or very strong kind of psychological, mental health. So then at my school, I would work with kids who have like anxiety issues or might have depression or dealing with something more intense. If a school doesn't have a school psychologist who does like the intervention therapy part, then like Mr. Hope can refer out to connect to. But we're lucky because we have the mental health supports. Because a lot of schools aren't inundated, so the school psychologist often is just doing testing and not doing nothing.
Additionally, too, with our counselors, because of the other mandates that we have with the career readiness and the 339 plan, they're also in the classrooms doing the career readiness profiles and doing that side of their job. That a lot of times, they're there mostly, they're doing beyond their scheduled counseling what they see. They're doing a lot of triage and then for the more intense, they're then referring to the licensed professional counselor or a psychologist. So on a scale, if you're looking at the tiers, your guidance counselors are more your tier ones. Some tier twos, and then your psychologist and your licensed professional counselors would get from Wesley are more tier threes, the more intense needs. So if you're looking at scaling. Another part we do for contracted services is pediatric therapy. They provide our occupational and physical therapy that is provided as part of special education. One thing we always look for, which ways can we get again, the bang for the buck? We utilize pediatric therapy because they are $10 to $15 an hour cheaper than the AIU. Most districts utilize intermediate units. We are one that do not. We have a little, I feel we have a good, good relationship with pediatric. The service is quick, the turn-on is quick, communication is quick, but also too, we're getting more, better cost. Pediatric, we spend, I would say, on average, $50,000 a year for the number of services. So if you want to, if we were to continue, go with the AIU, we would be looking probably $75,000 to almost $100, depending on the nature of the services. Now they've come down, the AIU has come down in recent years, but not enough to justify a jump for us to be cost-efficient. And then we also utilize Maxim and STAT for nursing services. For personal nurses when necessary, based on need, substitutes in schools. If we have a student going on a field trip that requires nursing services, we have to send a nurse. That's day-to-day nurses, that's field trips, that's overnight nursing. I know a band last year went on the field trip, the nurse had to go. It's expensive, but that's the need, the law. And the funding part, we're in financing, right? So this is what we have to get, what money we have coming in. The first two are federal dollars, the last one is state dollars. They're all part of the, the first one is for students ages five and under receiving services. We, that money fluctuates. This year was $1,200, the previous year we got $3,200. And we'll utilize that to pay for protocols, we call them, for psychological testing. Because there's students that are coming in that are five and under, we're able, we have to get, bring down what the psychologists have. And so we have to get the school, under-school age services. And then IDA passed through $269,000. Last year, that was $286,000. We utilize that for salaries for four special education teachers. Last year, we were able to pay for four teachers plus some benefits. This year, not so much. There's also one ahead of the dumb step. And then for the state money, we, $908,000 this year, that is used off-state offset expenses. It's based on the state formula and Act 16 expenditures. And what Act 16 is, is a report that we have to complete, is how much we spend per child. So each, each special education student is identified with a dollar not range, zero to $25,000, $26,050, $50 to $75, and then $75 and up. And based on those numbers is what we report to the state and then they make a determination in that.
That $908 that we budgeted for this year, is that, is that down from the previous year? Do you know Chris offhand? I don't mean to catch up.
I don't know.
Off the top of my head, I can check on that.
One of the, whether it was IDEA, Chris, you were telling me, or Rachel, you, I think both of you were saying, at one point, we could call all the teachers in that area, cover their salaries, but we're anticipating that we will not be able to.
That was under title, under federal money. I think Title I.
Yeah, the title.
That's title. Yeah, it's under titles.
All right. So David, to your point, some of that money we should rake in across superminds.
Now we'll know more once the governor releases, we'll get a feel for his budget when he does his speech in February. I saw, I think this morning, that there are components were increasing by, I think it was, a large disparate number to increase in the special education and.
Is that $100 million in special ed over all the districts? But that's a request, not a.
That's a request and so was the.
There's more rumbling about increases to special ed than I have with basic education funding.
No matter, at the end of the day, it's still going to be underfunded, but at least any money is good. But it'll still be always underfunded.
Can I ask you a question about the previous slide? Something you said, which were on the previous slide.
Yeah.
You made reference as an example to a band trip where a nurse was going on. What about with the band or some other group where they do something and the costs are to be borne by the student? You know, the band will do a lot of fundraising if they're going to go to Nashville or wherever. They have to fundraise to pay for their own transportation, aren't they? What happens in that case for someone with these special education?
If it's a school-sponsored trip, the school has to pay the expenses.
Even if the school is not paying for anybody else?
If it's a school-sponsored trip.
How do you define school sponsorship?
So like the band, what you went is a Carlington, it was a Carlington band trip. If it's a school-sponsored activity, not like in, where you have only Carlington students, it's a school-sponsored activity, even if it's a field trip that the school, the band has decided to do on their own, using the band as an example, anybody. So if bowling went on an overnight trip and there was a student that required medical nursing, nursing services as administering medication.
So for purposes of this, sponsorship does not necessarily come with school, any kind of school funding?
Correct.
Sponsorship's almost like just approval or, if you like the right way to put it? Okay. So the French class goes to France?
Yes, and there's a student that requires nursing services.
Well, if it's a school-sponsored trip.
Yes.
Let me pose a question to our solicitor, which is not in any way indicative of anything I would actually propose. Would, could the school, let's say for a band trip for example, could the band go on its trip to Nashville or?
Would, could the school, let's say for a band trip for example, could the band go on its trip to Nashville or wherever, and the school just say, we're just not going to sponsor? Do whatever you want to do, we're not going to raise a stink, but we're not sponsoring it. And I'm not suggesting we do that, but I'm trying to understand the law, how it works.
Assuming you're in your hypothetical, we really are not sponsoring it, and they're just going away on the weekend. And probably you could get away with that, but if this is a week, week thing, you know.
So if they're using time during class, prepare for it, and they're trying to say, you're, they're doing that.
Giving them that time off to go, you know, you have all of the indicia of school sponsorship, then, you know, a due process hearing examiner is going to hit you off for that.
Thank you.
To fit your question idea, flip it, what, if, if for some groups, we say the district can't send students to France, or we can't send the band to Nashville, but we'll let you fundraise for it, could we somehow capture those other hidden costs and request those groups to fundraise to cover those costs that are mandated by law? Is that?
Well, I just, I mean, that, that sort of follows, it's a.
Well.
So the.
Can we tell, but Jim, aren't we in that instance, in essence, telling the student what they have to pay for?
That a student has to be administered.
And it sounds like.
You can't devise a plan, you gotta start with this concept.
Yeah.
The federal government is saying these kids need to have equal opportunities.
Yeah.
Generalities never good, but in, you know, generally speaking, these kids are going to be less able to raise funds than their non-handicapped peers.
Agreed.
So because I can't go out and sell as many hoagies as your kids can, I, now I don't stay home because of that. Now you're punishing me because of my disability.
So you're recommending we shut up and move on?
I'm recommending that we get the Chris Hoffmann.
Understood.
Yeah.
You know, one last comment on it. Rachel was saying it a couple of times, this is an area where you can play games unexpectedly. The courts, the hearing officers to begin with, the courts in particular, will slap you down every time on these kind of things. This, the law is set up to benefit these kids, and believe me, you know, this isn't the first school across the country that has come up with these kind of ideas. They, if it's going to impact upon disabled, handicapped, needy child, you're going to lose.
And I certainly wasn't suggesting.
No, I understand that, and I'm, you know.
So pretty much any school sanctioned group that does something, it's covered. Like I'm trying to think of what wouldn't be covered. So like when the basketball team goes and does a car wash at the parking lot at Busy Beaver, that's different. Even though it's the basketball team.
Is it different?
But you get, you get others.
Things like these people, people groups where students will go.
Is booster activity possibly sanctioned by the school?
You know, and it's, it's not a school sponsored thing.
Probably not school sponsored, there's summertime, the kids go to the senior group, and they, you know, they buy the tickets, all you're going to say, you want to go, go talk to, you know, this private organization.
You know, I can't imagine.
Anything else beyond that, I can't think of too much, this isn't going to be a school sponsored.
You know, there are kids going.
Be entitled to.
Right, but the French class.
French class would be a different thing.
I was going to kind of suggest too, could you try little things like include all costs, maybe you could. But the problem, one, there may be a problem doing that. Secondly, there is definitely a problem if you exclude a child saying, hey, then raise sufficient money.
I was just saying the French class probably shouldn't be going to Fiji.
And any smarter, representing that family is going to find.
Think of France.
That's a good point. But you know what, on that, Rachel, you did a wonderful job, thank you for sharing a lot of information in a very succinct and timely way. At least what we were told, where districts tend to get in trouble in these areas, you talked a lot about the individual education plan. There was a time that districts' teachers would Xerox and just change the names.
Yeah.
That will get you into a world of trouble in two minutes, because it is an individual.
That's what the I stands for.
Yeah, and the other issue that tends to get districts in trouble is the other huge issue is timelines.
Yes.
Not, not meeting the timelines that are mandated within identifying children, meeting with families, testing, and so forth. And I think we've done pretty well at that.
Yes.
Joe is absolutely right, any other timeline, but any procedural screw up.
Yeah.
You can't deliver a free, appropriate public education if you don't follow the proper procedures. And my guess is, Rachel was about to say this, or will in a couple of minutes. If you think special education is expensive, what do you see would be hit in due process?
Pay me now or pay me more later.
Or, yeah.
Because the line I tend to run with the, about individualized, one of the exercises I have the special education teachers do every year is they pull, they have to pull a student and pull their last three IEPs, and if it's the exact same, we have a problem, it's the exact same IEP.
You've got more than a problem, you've lost.
Yeah. So I, as an exercise, so that they can get into that practice of making sure that it's individualized and together year to year, is I have the teachers look at those IEPs and look at the goals, did the goals change? And if they didn't change because they didn't meet the need, tell me why, put that statement in those present levels. Those present levels are your justification for everything, and that's where your documentation is. So briefly to wrap it up, so now you guys want to move on to Chris? What are our challenges, what do you need for Carlington that, but we're not so unique in this challenge? And one thing that I think Carlington is experiencing is increasingly large populations experience some form of trauma, mental health needs that are affected in the school setting. These are things that are happening outside of school, or things are coming into school with, but it's affecting their education. So how do we meet those needs? One of the things we've done through the year, year and a half that I've been here, we've increased our Wesley Family Services, as I had mentioned. We're also using more of our speech therapists and social skills and our counselors to meet those needs. While our counselors are doing a lot more tier one and tier two, so the number of tiers, by the time that child gets to a tier three, we've kind of, we've caught a lot of that. We're also doing a lot of professional development that's focused on school-based and mental health at trauma-informed schools. You'll hear Mr. Lockren talk about that in the upcoming months about, on the school safety side, there's a mental health component to school safety that we are addressing and making sure we're getting that there's trauma-informed schools. And we're also, Mr. Lockren likes to call it, triage lane we have. If people go through the office there, you have your two principals, you have your therapist, your mental health therapist, you have your two guidance counselors, you have Mr. Paper Transition Coordinator, who does a lot of work with our students. So we're able to capture a lot in the junior and senior high, which is when a lot of mental health needs tend to show up. So we're able to capture a lot of that as students have needs. So what does this all mean for next year? And I've said this a couple of times, where are we getting the most bang for our buck? We are fairly into the review process, I have a few plans in mind for making some changes. Kind of keeping this close to the vest until we see how some numbers pan out yet. One of those I did talk about was at the junior high, senior high, but at the elementary level, we have some things we're looking at as well. What do we know beyond that special ed tends to get unpredictable? Because one family, group of family could come in and register and swing the whole budget. It happens, it happened last year. But what we do know is we have incoming DART students. And what DART is, are students who are already receiving special education students who haven't even stepped foot in our door yet. They are not registered as kindergarten students, but they are receiving special education services.
And special education goes from birth to age twenty-one. We're responsible from three up, we meaning education. Welfare is up to three, if there's some months in there, but generally speaking.
Education is part B under IDA, and birth of three is part C. So it's a different federal law.
And DART is basically the AIU runs that program.
So, so we're responsible from three up, so what?
We meaning education, not we Carlington.
We, we pay a bill though.
You do, yeah, I, I know. But the, the I U is, you're not running a pre-kindergarten program here, the I U does. But you are paying something for that. Point being here is you've got thirteen, fourteen kids going to be knocking on your doorstep in addition to what you have.
So these students, Rachel, are these three older than?
These are five, these are kids that are going to be kindergarten eligible for nineteen twenty.
Okay, so they're within that older than three, but not at an old school yet, range?
Yes.
And we are currently paying some amount for these students?
Yes.
Okay, and then how is that determined?
We just take the bill.
And how much, how much is the bill?
Uh.
Ballparking, I mean, I don't.
What was the law, I think eight thousand, eight to fifteen thousand, I want to say, and I.
Or what period of time?
A year, a year's time, because it's not services that we do here in education at the, phrase is school level. It is specialized instruction that could be once a week. That can be done in the head start program, it can be done in the pre-K program, it can be done in the home. I mean, they don't have to be enrolled in any type of.
Like a TSS?
Those, that's more wraparound services.
Are you talking about early intervention services?
Yeah, and.
So you have to go to your pediatrician and they think there's a delay, they can, the doctor can say they need, and refer them for early intervention.
For a hundred ten.
I mean, if you feel that your child has a delay, or it has a need for, then you can contact the AIU. It was usually what happens is a recommendation, they will do an evaluation, so speech therapy services a lot of times, occupational therapy. Sometimes, a lot of times too, it happens, and I'm generalizing, they'll, we'll get them into kindergarten, we'll enroll them, we'll evaluate them. Sometimes they don't qualify. Oftentimes they do, but there's times where they doesn't, they don't qualify or don't, or they haven't met their, their goals and such. But this is what we have coming in, this is as of last week. Those numbers will change as we get through the process for the rest of the school year, because as students are identified through the AIU, they let us know. Last year we ended up with, I want to say twenty-three total for the district as identified needing services of kindergarten age.
So this number was twenty-three instead of fourteen?
Yeah.
Why did it, why would it change?
Well, that was the last year's kids that came to be kindergarten.
So we have ten kids, we have ten plus kids that have entered in to our district?
Not, not all of them register for kindergarten though, they may wait a year. So if you're identified as, I'm a five-year-old eligible, I'm going to be eligible for kindergarten in nineteen twenty, the parents have the, the right to enroll them in kindergarten, or they may wait a year, so they may not be ready.
If we wait, they're still going to be covered by us. But there's a decrease of about ten.
Correct.
And that would have been because he either moved out of the district, or they enrolled in school.
Or there's not as many that identify under that age bracket.
Okay. So that fluctuates quite a bit, seems, yeah.
Yeah, it does, it's, as students get identified, we get notified. And they're, the parents don't have to let the district know that they've been, they're receiving services. It's what they call the red file or the green file under the AIU. And if they're green file, we know about them, if they're a red file, we don't know until they show up. We still, we hold transition meetings every year with each family to, as, talk about what this student's needs might be, so we can help kind of plan and make that smooth transition, so that those students that are enrolling in kindergarten have a smooth transition, so that, because a lot of times that going into kindergarten is, sometimes it's rough.
And Rachel, you kind of indicated those are current numbers as of right now. It's pretty early on in the process, we're still in January, so those numbers could easily climb.
But the one I do want to make, this is, this is one that, this will, it'll hit our budget a little bit. Because it is, it's a plate, it's an approved private school, it'll come out of our subsidy at the end of the year. But those are about, you're looking anywhere depending on the need, from thirty to fifty thousand dollars.
A long student.
So when they transition into school age, do you do full evaluation, and then that's when you can determine whether
Yeah.
they met, you know, or need intervention work, so they don't need special ed anymore, or?
We do transition meetings with them in February, we'll talk about the process for kindergarten enrollment, as well as the process for evaluation, and then our psychologists will get with them in May, throughout the summer, evaluate. We have a meeting in August to determine eligibility, if there's an IEP that's necessary, so they start day one with that IEP.
And for that one student, like who placed them in that practice?
The AIU.
So that is completely, it's done, it is what it is, it's.
Yes, now we.
It's not just the AIU, it's through the AIU, but they've got their, I don't know what the initials are, but it's a, it's an IEP process there too.
It's an IEP process, and it's, it's a norm, and the number of new processes in early intervention programs is unreal. Like I've never seen anything like it. But for that particular student, that need is there.
And DART, DART is charged with child fund, they're, they're.
That's what I was going to say.
So this would be like one of the students that, in the slides previous, we have had, if this was the type of student who was in our district, in our school, and we placed them out, that's the same kind of thing, it's just already happened.
Correct.
Because even though the student's young.
Yeah, it's just starting the process, like as soon as they turn three, and then we're just responsible for transportation, transporting that student as well.
Obviously a pretty involved kid, correct, Rachel?
Yes, yeah, he is.
Because to be that young and in a private school.
He went in at the age of three.
But that's an exceptional exception, isn't it?
And we provide transportation for those students that have, that are in approved private schools, even though you're not having stepped foot on our door yet.
Okay, so.
That's it.
Rachel, excellent presentation, and I think you can see that we're very interested in this topic. There are a lot of very insightful questions and comments.
As I always say, if you guys ever have any questions, please feel free to, do not hesitate to reach out.
Does anyone have questions?
I'm curious, two things. As far as our third-party services, how do we measure the quality of what we're receiving from them?
I keep a very close eye, that's one of the things I, I look at. I feel that's part of my, one of my jobs is to making sure we're getting, are we getting as much as we can get from, from the agency? I meet with, I'm certainly Wes, I will meet with Wesley next week, we do quarterly reviews with Wesley to make sure that we're doing, it's a good mutual relationship.
So, so that we're placed in our school, like they, they're responsible for recording certain things, and that's how you're like kind of keeping track of them?
And I keep touch with all of our therapists on a regular basis.
And then as far as our teachers, what kind of support are they getting? Because, you know, when you have students in a classroom, and then you have like twenty-five other students, you know, like, you know, what kind of training and support are we giving our teachers?
Every year in August, we do what we call the special education boot camp, which is where we kind of go through from scratch. I look at paperwork all, all day, all year long, and some things that I, if I start to see something that we need to nip, or something that's not quite kosher that we need to kind of fix, I'll blast that on email. But we'll come back and talk about it in boot camp and really drill and answer questions. And then as teachers know, if they have questions about a particular student, and they're, hey, I'm not quite sure with this, where do I go with this? I'm, I'm, I probably talk to the teachers, probably at least once a, every teacher, I'm a sponsor every other week, with a question, or how can we help them do this? They're also to send me, I look at every re-evaluation report that goes out that door. I also look at every, every IEP they send me quarterly, to make sure that they're hitting the mark and making sure, principals are also on top of that in every IEP meeting, to making sure that it is an appropriate IEP.
Let me point out too, Rachel, that we, even though those kids may be in a private school, they're still our responsibility. We remain what's called the LEA, or Local Educational Agency. So it's our responsibility to make sure those kids are making the same progress, adequate progress towards their IEP goals as though they were here. So I mean, that's an important part of Rachel's job, but it is our responsibility ultimately, not really the private schools. They can't stay in business if they don't.
And one of the things I do with, when we go, because I go to every IEP that's out of district is, and actually the Bradley Center laughs at me, because they go, get your pen ready, because I look, because those, we're responsible for making sure those IEPs are compliant, best practices, and that they would pass a, the smell test for not.
And progress is being made.
And so I, I always take my red pen with me, because they, if there's something that's not, that doesn't fit our, what I believe would pass under a P E inspection.
So wait, we have the fiduciary responsibility?
Yes, yes. Apparently my reputation pursues me, because when I get to Bradley, do you have your pen?
She has several red pens.
So but it's, that's one of our jobs, and my job is, the LEA is making sure that we are within compliance, but not always compliant as much as best practice, and doing right by the child. What's good, is it good for the child? That's kind of where we go with that, to answer your question about supporting the teachers.
Appropriate person's adding it, right?
Yes, and that goes back to end around.
Yeah, and I, I think what's been hopefully helpful to the board this evening, they've seen, you know, what programs the district offers, a brief explanation of what they include, where they're located, and how many students we're servicing in each school and each program. So I think even, even that is helpful. So again, thank you, Rachel, very nice job, and thank you again. That, you know, concludes our discussion through a bunch of presentations.
Because it sounds like you have a lot of other things she has to work on.
I'll take your questions, plenty of questions with the clients, and then.
Where do the ESL students fit in all this?
They are considered regular education students.
Okay.
And so they fell under Title III.
Completely separate.
Completely separate, however, you may have, you may have students that can, we.
Yeah.
But we're not able to even evaluate students by law until they've been under a program for three years under the ESL. So if we, even if we feel, a lot of times though, there's a gray area, like, we will do evaluations, again, child, we, that child find obligation, you have to do, and again, doing right by the student. Where that gets tricky is the evaluation process itself, where we have to hire interpreters then to help us process through the evaluations. So I just processed the bill for an evaluation interpreter, which was, I think, three hundred and fifty dollars, just for the evaluation part, not counting the meeting itself. And that number's at eighty-eight right now for the district. And that number's at eighty-eight right now for the district, for ESL services. Um, there are about seventy and maybe an eighteenth high school.
A lot of, a lot of, I mean, sure, you can shrink the size of this if you're looking at it.
Sure.
Yeah, I know.
Slime.
Is that, can everybody see that? Is that clear or is that too small?
Yes.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, it's the shape thing, so.
Oh, we have.
So I just want to put up the main numbers on the board as we go through, just have kind of a little bit of a background here. See where we came from. And what we wanted to show a little bit here is where we're at with the preliminary budget. As of right now, this is the preliminary budget. Wanted to give the process we've been going through, show you where we started, how we came to some of these preliminary numbers, and how we're continuing the budget process, um, without getting into too much. So as an administration, our goal is to give you an accurate budget, well, limiting, uh, limiting the use of the fund balance and minimizing expenses as much as possible. So, um, if you recall the October two thousand eighteen Finance Committee, I probably scared everybody with giving the two-point-eight million, but as I said, that was just percentage increases. We do have salaries and benefits within that, um, with reasonable increases, and we do know the salaries for the most part. So there may be, if we see what positions we have to fill, but we have to include everything at this point, which is contracted and such. So as we see what positions we have to fill or what we don't, we will be able to remove some of that from there. But salary is our biggest jump within the budget from last year to this current year to next year. You can see, we at least, we've gotten the budget down to one-point-five-six-six million. We've continued to discuss, we've met with the other administration and Rachel, Dr. DePirio, we've brought in the principals. We've reviewed a lot of things such as, you know, programs, not programs, but tech software. Want to make sure we're utilizing everything that we are spending money on. Ed and I did an exercise, and I believe we sent that up to the board also, where, you know, what money we actually have to go through and pull back. As you can see, Dr. Antler, the one thing I thought was great that she showed everyone was the fact that, hey, the AIU, it's fifteen, that was a fif, ten to fifteen dollars more an hour than using maximum services. So it might not be money you see, we say, because you see that big number, but it's something, you know what we're doing a little bit. We are looking at other vendors, we're looking at different, different, um, different ways of doing things than possibly they've worked on before. You know, we keep beating down the copy guys for every dollar we can, and just the way the setup where they had our budget based on Keller, they had no Keller on the machine, and they were hitting us with overages. I've said this before, we pulled back, uh, Mr. Riddell and I pulled back six, sixty-five hundred dollars in refunds for us. So, you know, we're just looking at every angle, reviewing contracts. Now, how we arrived at some of these preliminary numbers, we, we raised the property tax up the index at the moment to the two-point-nine percent. So that's going to give us about an extra four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, which, that will be a determination and a reason we're going through this preliminary budget process also, so we can apply for the referendum exceptions. Now, as we did that exercise earlier, it, it didn't look too positive at this time, but we will do the process, go through it, enter it, and see if anything pulls out of it, but.
Do we think that we're going to see our education costs increase and make us eligible for an exception for special education costs?
I think right now, when we did that exercise from last year's, because we're using the seventeen eighteen, I do not see that at the moment, because.
I mean, we're really high, it looks like we're going to plateau at that high level, is that a sense, or?
Well, looking at, we had a lot of high-number students graduating last, in last year, so, um, our group private school costs are actually going to be reduced by about forty-five thousand this year. So those numbers are on the low.
You can see a decrease there.
Possibly, but I'm, I'm, I'm always conservative with that, because again, on the flip side of that, with those high-number students graduating, those access-eligible Medicaid-eligible reimbursements are also going to be reduced. So where we may see a reduction in expenditures, we're, we may see a reduction in those funding sources as well.
And, and Chris, the bottom line, or?
So I'm always conservative with that.
Right. Doesn't look good for anything.
You are applying for, we are applying for the exceptions for special ed.
Yeah.
Nothing else you saw.
No, no, no.
And, uh, for, um, there, there are two exceptions you said we were applying for, we're not sure that we meet the criteria.
Yes, but we will apply for, and the other thing that's a little bit tough about this, even though we're at a record high for special ed than we ever spent, because that jump has decreased, we're instead of going up six-hundred thousand dollars a year, now we're up four-hundred thousand and two-hundred. When the formula breaks up, it just kind of gets us, we didn't increase enough, even though we're at an all-time high. It's kind of like, say, the Peasers.
And just, you know, the, the process of this is one where we will fill out forms.
Yes.
Uh, and so we can fill out, when we have the data, a form, like for special ed, and be able to see, oh, we qualify or we don't, subject to PD approval.
And we ran through that exercise for request earlier, so, and at that time, then I don't expect it to, like, we'll go through the process, we'll submit it and see what happens. I mean, there's no harm in filling it out.
What would change in terms of the data that you would use to determine a special ed exception? What changes? Is there any other data that we have?
Not, we have the AFRA.
So we, we know the answer.
The only, the only change would have been if they said for the exceptions, we weren't using the seventeen eighteen year.
Which they sent us, PD sent us an email saying.
We have to. We use seventeen eighteen.
Yeah. So, I mean.
That one, but we.
We know the special ed exception is not going to be available to us, really.
And that's how we're, that's how we're planning.
Because the data isn't going to change.
And that's how we're planning right now. That, that's a plan, but we're still going to go through the process and, and, uh, just to do.
Which, which is a good thing, because our cost didn't increase enough to qualify us for an exception.
It increased to an all-time, it increased to an all-time high, but not enough, so.
That much more.
Yes. And then another thing, we took out three-fifteen if we delayed construction projects right now, so.
Who knows? What are those projects?
Parking lot, right?
Yes.
What, what the parking lot, what, and I, I don't recall this, I apologize.
We put that in the original budget back.
What was going to be done to the parking lot?
The Gloucester property, the Gloucester property.
Oh, that parking, I'm sorry, I was thinking here at the high school, and it was like, well, we just did something ten years ago. Okay, the, the development, the development of the.
Yes, and that was, that was even, that was an original estimate, I believe, and Dennis may be able to add to this. The original estimate for the parking lot was more just to, for them to get permits and get things rolling at three-fifteen. It wasn't necessarily a final cost, but that parking lot would cost. So we budgeted that back in because there were real discussions that that possibly could happen. So recommendation was not eliminate it, but delay it until we get things further down where we would like it to be. And then, as I said earlier, we've removed things from the budget that we feel are no longer relevant. There, I don't want to name any programs or such, because it had nothing to do with maybe the capabilities of the program or the tech software. It just, we may have found a version that met the needs the same way that are a little more cost-effective. If I phrase that politically correct enough. So, so, yo, it's not necessarily we're kicking programs out because they're bad, but maybe they weren't utilized, maybe a teacher, they, teacher found something they could use better for their needs. And that's another thing where we're dealing with high school principals, how many licenses do we need for this program? You know, do we need three-hundred? We backed out, we knocked things down. Not a major, but it's something, and we just got to be more efficient, and then we do have to nickel and dime a little bit with everything. So we're trying to be smart by that and bring administrators into this process, because they're the ones that are, you know, I'd be, it would be irresponsible to me to not consult Rachel on her special ed and say, we're just not using this anymore. So we continue to work as a team, so. And then the budget process continues. Now, I probably mentioned a lot of these things already, but, um, we're doing an overall examination on it. In past, past budgets, it's been more of a roll forward, and I think I've shown, shown some of you how the budget has been rolled forward. But, you know, per recommendation, I think this form wants a budget right now that's based on real, actual numbers, how we're building it, and that, that is the goal, and that's how we're basing it right now. So it's on real numbers, not, we're kind of in a situation where we could continue to roll forward because finances were a little bit better, we didn't have all these regulations, our special ed costs weren't as high. So we're using real numbers so we can get accuracy. We're looking at short-term and long-term solutions that we create some cost right now. You know, some of those, I don't know if they're to be mentioned publicly right now or not, but it's just to kind of run the operation more efficiently. We continue to look at those, we'll, we'll have some presentations to make at some point on, on the short-term and long-term. We have, have until that May area to get things together. And the other thing is with the revenues, I know we look at it, but I want to mention a few things on the revenues. We haven't seen major increases right now in any of our revenues, in fact, we've seen some decreases. Now, we have an idea on our property taxes, we have an idea on, we can, we can pretty much calculate based on what we spend with the retirement and the social security, we're getting fifty percent back of that as now. But one of the issues we have is with Title I. We took about a thirty-thousand-dollar, five-percent hit down. That covers, that covers five teachers, four that are above jump step. So in the past, the funding has been enough where we've been able to roll forward. So not only were we able to pay for some of those teachers, but we could bring in supplies and a portion of that gets sent down to the non-publics. There is an expectation that goes down possibly five percent. We're to hold still right now, but it could go as high as fifteen percent. We don't expect that, but we will find that number out till May. So if that flips with no roll forward, we're not even paying for the teachers that are in that Title I. Title II could disappear, once again, I don't know what your feelings on if it goes away or not, but.
So Title I has what they call hold harmless, um, and hold harmless is based on your census core numbers, is how much they can take, take at most. Based on our numbers, they can take at most fifteen percent from one year to the next. Not saying they will, because they could have done that last year, and they, we only saw a reduction of five percent. But again, we won't know Title I.
Oh, man.
Correct. Now, Title II does not, they lost the hold harmless provision that came out in ESAA. So Title II can go away any year based on budget and funding, and that all comes from the federal amount and then triples down to the state. So we are not sure what that looks like. But then likewise with Title IV, but last year in Title IV, we saw an increase. So we're not, we, we kind of have to hold tight on that one till May, till the, and they usually typically release those allocations, those preliminary allocations at the May conference.
So that, that could go away, it might not, but that supports our, I believe, what, at our craft in fifth grade or kindergarten fifth grade, with the extra class.
Uh, crafting.
Crafting, so that gives that class reduction size, so that pays for that salary.
This is a preliminary plan there to proceed, assuming there'll be a five-percent decrease in Title I money, and then if in May it hits fifteen, you might come back to us and make a different recommendation.
Well, I didn't knock the five percent now, because I, I do feel some expenditures as we go line by line, we're going to eliminate that. So I think that will work out at the moment, but, well, for the final budget, we should, I would hope to have the actual number at that one.
Well, we're going to see a few number, I mean, we won't have some, we won't know exactly what basic education funding is.
Yes.
And that. And a variety of other things when we get to the final.
And actually, we've had an estimate on that basic, uh, edu, education funding. We were at four-point-three-oh-six last year. At the last PASBO gathering, they estimated it to be four, four-point-three-one-five. So nine thousand dollars on four-point-three-million of funding, percentage-wise, nothing. So as you can see, that's kind of why we've taken the approach with revenue to play very conservative at the time being, and we really change the things we control, but we don't want to knock anything too much, because, as you know, there's always some increases, some fluctuation with revenue.
So do you see our revenue numbers increasing, decreasing, probably going to be about this amount? Have you estimate, are they conservatively estimated for their low? What is, what is your feeling?
I would like to think they're in the ballpark of what they are now. I don't expect a major increase, like what we have budgeted now as the index.
Right.
You know, on twenty-eight million dollars worth of revenue, I don't see a ten-percent increase. Could we see a one-percent increase with three-hundred-eighty thousand? Possibly, it, it's just tough to judge, I mean, everything I hear seems things are going to stay pretty consistent if not spring down.
So the, the, our actual revenues for the seventeen eighteen year were twenty-eight million, two-hundred-seventy thousand, and you're forecasting twenty-eight million, five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand?
Now.
So why over two years?
If you remember, if you remember, the one thing was the IDA ten, the medical reimbursement with the access. We took a double draw now, that was three-hundred-seventy-four thousand dollars of revenue.
We have a hundred-and-eighty more in the previous year approximately, right?
Yeah, so, so that. So we expect around one-eighty for a one-year blow-off, because we trained that completely down.
So if you take one-eighty, that'd mean we were at twenty-eight ninety thousand versus twenty-eight five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand. So we saw about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar increase over two years in revenue, which is less than a percent a year, which seems historically low.
Well, but we, we also took a hit down in Title I, we may take another hit down in Title I.
But from your budgets, it's, I don't, it doesn't look like in total the federal money is decreasing. After making the adjustment, we just talked about the hundred-and-eighty seven.
Right, I haven't made the five-percent adjustment down.
Maybe fifty, thirty, fifty thousand.
I haven't made that adjustment down yet on the Title I.
Oh, it's not reflected in here yet?
No, that's the six-eighteen, that's similar to what we brought in last year.
Federal money is the same from last year to this year.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't make that five-thousand.
I'm comparing to the seventeen eighteen actual, not to the nineteen, eighteen, nineteen budget.
Right. The seventeen eighteen actual, this is eighteen nineteen, that's the eighteen nineteen number that we were given for Title I.
Seventeen eighteen.
Because seventeen eighteen actual was around. Now, Title I was about six, Title I was six-fifty-four.
Overall federal.
Okay.
Overall federal was, um, about, well, we have the one-eighty in there. So if we take out the one-eighty, we're at about, um, nine-fifty or so. Does that make sense?
Nine-fifty, I have nine-on-nine, but there was a thirty, thirty-four thousand dollar drop from seventeen eighteen actuals out of Title I.
Well, the nine-on-nine is what you had for. Budget.
Budget and position.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about the audit for the last completed year ending June two thousand and eighteen, the actuals, I'm looking at actuals. There, so, um, so we're looking right now at a one-point-six-million-dollar deficit. How are we going to deal with that? What are, I mean, I know Joe has talked about looking at a variety of different things, any opportunities in revenue that you can see? Or is it all going to have to come out of expenditures?
I think a majority will come out of expenditures. I can't judge the funding without making a speculative guess on some of this information, because its numbers were given, it's, we're not, I, I sometimes compare us to, hey, we have a sales force that salaries aren't based on commission, they're based on a salary, where they can't go out and generate revenue, there's nothing we can encourage to go generate revenue.
No, no, I, I just didn't know when your preparation, if you, you know, I look at, for example, um.
Right, I, I see what you're saying.
Property taxes, and, and we see over two years an increase in that area of just, of just four percent, when the index has been combined closer to six percent for those years. So that's why I'd ask if maybe they were a little conservative on the revenue estimates?
Yes, conservative on the rest.
So you do see maybe there's some, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to see where the one-point-six, where are we going to, you know, and if there's opportunity in revenue, then we have to be doing less on an expenditure side.
There's areas, but I think most of it's out of expense.
I think until we get some more confirmation from what the state's going to do, I think that also plays a role, because again, the government has not released his budget yet to even, or even given his speech as to what his feelings or inclinations are going to be, that also help, will help us kind of prepare where we need to go. Um, if we are too conservative, we're just conservative.
And I think a great example of this is, you know, we have a four-point-three-million-dollar pot. That's only one of mine, from the estimate from PASBO, that's, and that's the business official that work with PD and, you know, this field. But, uh, that's nine thousand dollars on four-point-three, so that gives you a basis of, they're not looking to raise quite a bit, and they're talking about, let's throw a hundred million in, you know, they're pushing the governor to throw a hundred million dollars into special ed to buy it over what the five, is it five hundred school districts, let's see?
Four ninety-nine.
Okay, that was pretty darn close, I overbid.
Don't argue with them.
I overbid. But, uh, so, you know, you draw that over that.
It's not kind of going to use in, but that, so it's not.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't see a major raise in it, but if you get one percent off of twenty-eight, twenty-eight million, that's two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, and one percent, that's not much. It is when you're in a deficit, but it's not much on twenty-eight.
The fund balance right now is at what?
I think we're around two-point-five, two-point-six.
Two-point-six. So if we, and right now we have a one-point-six deficit, and I know that's going to come down, but, I mean, there's my concern. I mean, we can see easily in two years, it's, yeah, it's gone, and at that rate, in the third year, we got to make a million dollars in cuts, and we don't have any wiggle, we just got to do it. So, um, that's why I'm, I'm asking as to where we might be. Right now speculating is some opportunities, it sounds like maybe a little revenue, but you don't really see it, so we're really looking at significant cuts in expenditures at some. It sounds like maybe a little revenue, but you don't really see it, so we're really looking at significant cuts in expenditures at some point in time. Yeah?
The state numbers we think will come in.
You're saying nine grand higher? Nine grand higher maybe?
On the basic education.
Well, we don't know, I mean, we won't know until, when do they give us preliminary?
I wanna say between March or April. Fortunately, I know there was a little delay last year due to the fact that it was an election year. So from my experience, which is a long experience, but things I heard, that comes slower on an election year, plus they're more conservative.
Typically, I know the governor's done his budget speech in February, and then those numbers that come to fruition tend to be like March, end of March, beginning of April.
I think we might have fell into April, May with the final numbers.
We haven't had numbers until October, November, December.
And that's the thing with the titles, that comes out later. I was speaking with Lisa Riley, who does our federal programs, and she was saying, we're in a government shutdown right now, so.
Changes there, who knows?
So the, the state revenues that you've put in the budget now are conservative and maybe not worst case scenario, but.
I think they're reasonably conservative.
Okay.
They're conservative but reasonable.
If you, to define that, you're on the lowest, I'm, again, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but it sounds to me like you're not estimating on the high side of anything. You're estimating maybe a little on the low side, is that what you mean by conservative?
What I think I'm doing is fair for the information we have right now, but some of it's slightly unpredictable. Because say Title I goes down, then maybe we have a bump in another area, it may offset each other. I don't think it, do I hope we get a 1% increase? Yeah, that would be great, it's 200, but I can't, I can't make any guarantees on it. I can base it off what we have, the information I have, and I don't have certain information except historical to an extent. But the, the current history on at least the federal funding is not positive. So even if we see a little bit of a bump because we have a good property tax, we bring in a good property tax number. Our earned income tax comes in a little bit higher, but we're not raising any rates on that. Now, an assumption would be some, some money goes up. But when the property tax, one of the, one of the buildings, you know, we had to cut a refund check because it burned down this year. So that's a nice value of a building that burned down.
Could, could we look at, look at it real quick? So in, if I look at what I think was budgeted for this year, we had 18.2 million for the local. I'm using, I think this is created a couple of months ago, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's a couple of months ago.
It's a couple, it's all back there. Some of these might not be perfect, but it says on here, budgeted 2018, 2019 was 2, 18.2 million for local tax revenue. So on, on this, early, early, early budgetary number for 2020, you've got 18.3 roughly. So a really, really small, like, less than $50,000 increase for local taxes, is that roughly correct?
That would be correct right now, but for total local revenues, it might be off, because that bottom line is 18.7. 18.7 actually, it's 18.69. So, so that's essentially the bump in that property tax for rent.
Almost half a million.
Yes.
Okay. And that you feel is conservative but reasonable?
Because we have all our current revenue from our budgeted current real estate taxes. We're above what we budgeted for right now through January, but now we have to start recording everything as delinquent taxes from the 18 year. So that needs to catch up to what we have budgeted right now.
And the, the 18.7 million revenue was based on a projected increase that we think we might?
If we made the increase up to index.
Index, okay.
And the key, the key to this budget into, we're gonna, I can give budget updates as we go through this process each month. We're doing a finance committee, so we can give you updates. We'll continue to work down, because with this spreadsheet, it's kind of my living document, so it's all formulated. So when I go in and put these numbers in, they can consistently change as we find things we're pulling out. So it's not such as we're creating, it's as, it's not creating a whole new document each time. It's, you know, we're changing the numbers, we're pulling things out, hey, that program's no longer needed. Okay, we're not filling that position, we can move that out. So I hate to sound like Mike Tomp, but it's, it's a process.
Right.
You know?
If I could articulate my version, I think you were trying to get very closely articulate your schedule question, your concern. My version of that is, what we've been doing the last couple of years, we, we've gotta work magic with numbers. And when we start with a, you know, a rough deficit, last year was 800,000 or whatever the number was. We make some cuts, we move things around, we get to minus 300,000 or whatever. And then last year we were fortunate, the number got almost to zero, or roughly, you know, around number zero. We're trying to balance, and I mean, Dave, your question is, you're showing a very preliminary 1.5 million, 1.6 million deficit. How much of that is real? Do we really have to find 1.6 million cuts, or is it really gonna be more like 800,000 or 6?
Where does it number about to be? Here's the thing, we could be up to a million dollars in salary benefit increases. So, you know, as we, as we pull.
How do we not know what we're gonna be?
Well, there, because there's positions we don't necessarily know we're filling. There's things we have to put in, such as, you know, Act 93, there, there's something in there where we pay a week out. If they don't use the full four weeks of vacation, we pay a week out. So we have to account for all those things right now. And there's jobs, and then, and we've moved, we moved some coding around. So we're still, like I said, we're still trimming, trimming down as we go.
Okay, well, we're not gonna know a lot of that stuff, even at the final budget, I would think.
Then if you don't know, you have to budget for it, right?
We have to make some allowance, I would contend as to what is reasonable. I don't think we're in a position to be too conservative with our final budget. Because if we are on the conservative side, we are going to un-revenue. That means we're gonna be saying, if we're gonna err, we're gonna err that we have a little bit less revenue than we want. If we do that, we have to make greater cuts on the expenditure side. I'm not suggesting that we have bestariad with our revenue and say, oh, this will come through, and this will come through. But given that, we really have to try to hit the mark. I think that an approach, which had been used in the district for decades, I think, always a little on the revenues, a little high in the expenditures. I think a lot of districts do that. I don't think we're in the, in the position to do that, only because of the concern I have as to what impact that would then have on the expenditure side. And I, we're gonna have to make a lot of cuts, and we don't want to cut the cut any deeper than we really have to. So that's why I'm asking the question, that's on the revenue side, Chris. If, if we, if we project revenue at 28 and a half million, and revenue then comes in at 29 and a half? That next year, I think we really have to look at how we're doing our revenue estimates, because that meant we had to cut an extra million, then we really had to. And I know that's difficult.
But here's the thing, last year, for example, we budgeted, we were way over the revenue budgeting. I didn't create that budget, 17 million. Which is, I just wasn't here. But it was at, say 20, I can't remember exactly the numbers on there, but say it was 27 and a half million revenue comes in. Or maybe 27 million if revenue came in at 28, 21 million. So that was a million over. So I don't think I'm too extreme that we've done anything. I'm half. And I don't think I'm being too, too light on revenue. I think I gave a fair projections where, hey, we have a 91 and a half percent collection. Here was our basis of, and then at some point, our assessment number's gonna come in, which hopefully comes in higher than next year. But we had, like I said, we had some losses, but you'd think they always bump. But we'll have that before that final budget's in also.
Agreed, agreed. But then I also look at, for example, if we look at the number for two years. All right, so our actual for the year ending 18. Subsidies for Medicaid, Medicare, excuse me, and for Peers. The actual was almost 2.5 million.
Yes.
And you're budgeting 2.2 million, 530,000. So in two years' time, you're saying that increased only 30,000. It seems to me, over two years' time, our salaries have increased such overall, as well as the Peers rate. I would expect to see greater than a $30,000 increase there.
Yeah, I do it based off the whole formula through this spreadsheet.
But you can see we're on, when I, when I analyze it, you know, a different methodology coming up with a, which is, is back to the envelope, granted, but it's, I mean, it makes sense, doesn't it?
And as I say, as we, we go through this, we'll go through a finer tooth comb. This is, this is the beginning of the process. I'm not saying I'm stuck on these numbers. I'm just saying, this is what we have now, and we're gonna go, continue to go through. Like, go have an update in March, and I'm sure we'll bring it down a little bit more. We have made some, may have some new numbers. I'm going to have my payroll person to reach out through my list also, up people in the salary chart that I created. You know, it, it's a continuing process.
So Chris, let me leave it this way, I, I appreciate that, that a lot of you guys had to help the, Chris asked a question. What we're all looking at is where along this very complex, ever-changing process? Where should we be making, or helping you, or helping the team make decisions? The 1.5, 1.6 is a scary number for all of us. Understanding that you have some complex things you're looking at. State numbers are another six weeks away, other numbers are gonna come in. Where along the path between now and the end of June, should we be taking a serious look at the expenditure side? To say, is our expenditure nut that we have to crack, is it 200,000 in cuts, or is it 1.2 million? I'm, you know, making a, no.
Well, I think it's.
And it doesn't have to be tonight, but just help us in the, in the coming weeks.
I think the process, I think we've already came up with some, you know, in the, in the boardroom. That, you know, we have some presentations, we have some thoughts on it. It's just a, you know, we have a school, our report that's coming out to see how efficiently our, so when these reports come out, we have to take them seriously. Do I think we're going to get down to a zero budget based on cuts we can make out of this? Most likely, no. But I think we have to have a plan in, we have to start the plan, we've started the plan already. I think the plan has to start now and say, hey, this is what we're gonna do. We need to know what we're gonna do if Title I drops five to 10%. You know, we have to have that plan, where we have to be ready to act on things, but if we don't need to act on them at that point, great.
Right.
But, you know, we're gonna be in a place, because do we have one, if it was really 1.2 million, do we have 1.2 million to cut? That's a.
Well, we don't have the luxury of not cutting, at least at some point in time, because of our.
And I think that's what this, that's what this shows too.
I think that's what we all have to keep, that's what really concerns me. And I, I don't think we're wasting money. I, I, I think the money is going into things that are important. I think the hard thing is before all of us, the fact that we're gonna have to cut stuff that people are not, us included, are not gonna wanna have to cut. But we just don't have the money to do it, so either.
I appreciate the comment that we're all wasting.
No, I don't think, I don't think so. I mean, you can always improve, always improve, but it's like, the, the solution is not finding the fact, in my opinion. I, because I don't think this.
Ed and I, Ed Mantick and I, we sat down and did an exercise, and we pulled out, okay, charter, could charter schools possibly go down? We sure hope so, but on the other end, now we have, we have, we're, we're offering Parkway to freshman next year. So we have 20 here, and it's like $6,500 a kid, so that's an increase we have to deal with. You know, we're doing the roof, we're on the roof with the capital project with Pathfinder, I think, what was George's number there, 37?
353.
But I brought it down to 37. So I mean, those are expenses right there that could be, you know, that's $100,000 in effort expenses possibly. So, I mean, it's just the dynamics, and we've built those things in. We've, you know, we lower George's, what the Pathfinder estimate he provided us with to the new lower number, it's 10,000, but it's not.
It's even a little more, but the, the point about it is, and I think Chris ma- makes a good point, David, I know you're coming from a resistance of urgency. The, the issue is though, is there an aspect of this that's going to require what I'll call long-range planning? I don't mean long-range, long-range. But it requires a plan, and it requires what we're going to do this year, next year, and so forth to get to that point. And I think Chris made a good point when he said, we do have irons in the fire. Where we, we're reassessing a lot of what we do, and some of it is based on this need. You know, how, how can we maintain the same quality of services by yet making some adjustments? And that is a plan that is gonna take some time, but we're working on that.
I mean, I, I think I don't doubt that. And I know you guys are putting, collective, all of you, are working very hard to manage an issue that I know you're very aware of.
Yeah, and the, and the other thing is, you know, I want everybody to know, we're in a, once we build a budget, it doesn't mean this group is happy with spending up to it. Some of it is a plan, it's, you know, hey, we're, this is where we think charter school kids are going, this is where the trend is going. Maybe that goes under. For an example is, you know, Rachel looks for her bang for the buck out of things, where necessarily, we don't have control over the kids that need, that have those needs for outside vendors and such. But she has the flexibility to find her best value for things, and maybe that's a good way for it, we'll continue to find best value.
Because again, like one of the examples was with.
Just, this is Chris's presentation, it wasn't Julie's presentation.
My apologies.
But, you know, example, Dennis's goal isn't to spend up to his budget, you know, our goal is to spend below that. But if a lawnmower, you know, a $30,000 lawnmower decides to break down, we have to replace it. And some of those things are getting to 15, 20 years old, they're high usage, there's multiple fields they cut. We're dragged, you know, we're putting it on a trailer and dragging it down to each field, we don't have it at a field. So there's just certain things that come about. I mean, look at this year, we had the pipe burst out there, we had the sinkhole in Carnegie, so there's just things we can hope don't happen, but.
And we know that that happens.
Acts of nature.
We know that happens every year, we can reasonably provide reserve, anticipating that on an average basis per year, we may see whatever the amount might feel to be reasonable, and provide for that. You know, I, my feeling is that we need a tool to help us, not just this year, but as we go forward. And, and that tool to be as, as good a predictor of actual expenses. So that means that it's better that we come in with a 1%, in my opinion, a 1% higher deficit than a 3% higher surplus. Because with the 1% higher deficit, we were closer to what we actually did. That, I think, is what's gonna be most helpful to the district to be able to deal with the very limited fund balance we have. You know, 2.6 million fund balance? Let's say we're gonna have $30 million in expenditures, and we wanna have a reasonable minimal fund balance of 4%. That's a million two. That means we only have a million four to spend down until we're in the red zone on the fund balance. And we're always looking at, and I know it's not gonna be a million six, but that, that's, you know.
Could I pause you on that and, and get the board to do that? Cause I completely agree with your position on what, get feedback. Do you, does everyone agree with David's point? His point was, if we're cutting too aggressively, we're cutting into the bone, we're hurting the kids in the district. If we have to err, let's err, we still wanna get as close to zero as possible, but if we have to err, let's err on not underestimating revenue.
I'm not suggesting we overestimate.
No, agree, reasonable, but.
As, the budget that, our, our objective here is not to be sure that we don't have, we, we don't go the bad way. Which is estimate too small a deficit or too large a surplus, but rather, we try to hit, let's hit the mark. Let's, our metric should be how close, and it seems to me, last year's budget came pretty close to hitting the mark. Once you made the adjustment for the revenue.
17. We got down to about 317.
But in terms of what we budgeted versus what our actuals were for the.
1718?
Yeah, my recollections, we were pretty close.
My, my, only thing with that, we were close to what the budget final were, but we were a million dollars off in what was the budget for expenditures and revenues too. So we were milling it off on how that was budgeted because of previous techniques. You know, we ended up close, so I think it was like a 458, and ended up at 317. Well, actually, we had nothing deposit at 100 last year, but I'm thinking this year's 317.
So it was.
So Riley was taking, you came into it about halfway through the process, you know?
Absolutely.
Based on the figure of what Kirby had been doing.
1718 budget was built by Kirby, the preliminary budget for last year was built by Mr. Riley. And then I finished that 1718 budget where we went from, or the 1819 budget where we went from 800 to 317. But the previous year, where our 1718 actuals are built off of that budget, Kirby built the 1718 budget. But there, there was a big gap, we came out in the positive, but there was a big gap in where revenues were budgeted and expenses were budgeted. They were much, and you can probably see it on that sheet right now.
For the record.
So I think we're getting a lot closer on that.
If you come in with a budget where current expenditures do not exceed current revenues, then I'm comfortable if you're being conservative one way or the other, whatever you're doing. Because at least at that point, we're not pushing up on the fund balance. It's where we're using, I just wanna see as little as fund balance budgeted to balance the budget. I guess maybe that's the most succinct way to put it.
And I agree with you completely. And I agree with you completely on that. And that's our goal. And we're going to keep pounding.
And I know, I'm talking to Dr. Imperio, you guys are looking at a lot of different things. And it is a long-term process, but a million four is going to go like that.
Let me ask it a different way.
Yes.
The last couple of years, we've had three, four, five, $600,000 deficits, and it was after extensive cutting and program reductions and gnashing of teeth and stuff like that. I believe, and I'd love everybody else to share your thoughts, the 1.5, 1.6, I'm just nervous. We know it's not the final number, but at what point between now and May 1st, do you see that 1.5, 1.6 number becoming more real, where you can say, okay, here's what. I have a better dart throw now, I'm going to get a little bit closer.
I'm going to get closer in February. We're going to get a lot closer in March. I don't, I don't want to put it.
So your point is just be patient, this is the worst, ugliest picture, and we're going to refine it.
2.0 was really the ugliest picture. This is, this is not as ugly, but ugly. But like I said, last time, we kept pushing down, and, you know, we'll find some room with where, you know, we originally had the salaries. The other thing is, like, the benefits. We had a 1.9% increase in the health insurance last year. AICIC tells us the budget about 3%. So we went up 3%, but they could come out and tell us in their March, March meeting, February, March, it's 2.0. So that knocks a percent off the, off of those expenditures. But we'll go 3.0 now. The expenditures, I did a general increase. Now we're going, we started to get into this budget to go line by line and say, okay, do we, is this going? How much is this going up? How much is the Pro Soft going up for this year? We have those in three-year contracts. We're building that in now. So there's going to be things that change. It's not just the bump, and we've eliminated some of that bump, too.
So I asked the same question on the expenditure side. In other words, if we come to you and say, the deficit's too great, and we're, we're pretty solid in revenue, so we need to see you cut 600, 700,000 out of expenditures, how much time do you need to do that? Because that's my concern for waiting, and I know you're not suggesting that, Jim. But if we find we're waiting to May to get better numbers, and then it's like, well, we got to cut 700,000, well, we're not going to cut it if we start with May. So it's kind of a rhetorical question, because I don't really expect an answer in regard, but I, I don't know that we can wait to start.
To make it real, maybe there needs to be an expenditure hit list where, depending on where that final number ends up, here's the district's hit list, and if, if we need to cut 200,000, and here's the first 200,000 to go, let's identify it over the next 30 days or whatever.
And I, my personal preference in terms of approach would be just to see the budget adjusted accordingly, listing perhaps the items that had been removed, so that we can have a discussion as to whether or not it's acceptable to us. And if we say, you know what, you cut 100,000 for item Program A, we got to put Program A back in there. Well, you know what? We got to find $100,000 worth of cuts to restore it. Because if we just, I feel, any group usually starts looking at a list and say, well, here's 10 items we can cut. They're all good things, and if we look at each one individually, we're going to say, I don't want to cut that, because it's a good, it's a good thing. I think, you know, personally, I'd like to see a budget that's showing.
And the other end of that right now, we received a $25,000, what is it, the Part A security grant? But that's a zero sum right now, because we had to spend all that immediately. You have to do locks, the Raptor system, which is an ID swipe, the token center in the building. But outside that, we've never really built a security budget also. So is that something we're going to add in at a certain point? Because we don't really, we haven't done much on that end. And budgetarily, what if we want to balance budget? How are we going to add to a budget with something like that? So it, but I always say, that's a societal choice, not a monetary choice.
And let's keep in mind, too, we know we're going to see a big increase in salary just due to the jump step. I mean, we may want to say, we don't want to use any of our, because we need that to offset. We may need a new, we're just going to offset the jump step. So I think we can look at what we're dealing with this year. Not only do we need to cut that deficit down, it's going to get greater as a result of our increase in payroll as a result of a jump step. So we're going to have to.
And that's, that's our big areas, salary, jump steps, as we said, you know. I feel the great example on that is the Title I. We're not going to be supporting those salaries with that at a certain point if we're not getting increases in that.
Title I, what is, how much?
Six, 618 currently, and then it would be, it could be up to a 5% to 15% reduction. We got a 5% upgrade.
15% reduction's 100,000.
Yep.
And we're looking at a million six. So, I mean, clearly, I mean, that's significant.
Absolutely.
But it's a lot more than just that potential exposure.
Yes, I mean.
It's going in the wrong direction, it's going in the wrong direction to me, it works.
Breaking to the wire, you know, all the dynamics of this. So it's, it's a tough place, but we're continuing to work. I think we've had good ideas so far. It's just, you know, we have to present ideas to the board, and then we also have to continue on our end to back off. And I think we do that as a team. I think we got a good circle right now, and we're communicating with everybody. One of the biggest issues I see sometimes is when you don't have enough communication. The communication we've had here lately has been very helpful, like I said, Rachel, Ed, the high school principals, especially Dr. Imperio. I think it's, you know, we build a good team on it, and we listen, and when we have help from the board members that come in, and, you know, I think we have a good process for this whole thing. It's, you know, if anybody finds any, because we like to call them magic bullets, feel free to let us know. But, you know, I, I think we've, everybody's been very helpful with it, and we're all on, have the same mentality with it. So we appreciate everyone's help and tips in for it. And it's good that we get tough questions asked to us, because it makes us think more and say, okay, let's go back. I think we're all humble people in that sense, and we appreciate the feedback.
Let me pause you there. Rest of the board, so David and I have been blabbing a lot, we've been sharing ideas, but Kelly, what are your, what are your questions? What stuff haven't we covered? What are your concerns? Are, are you okay with, kind of here with the pitch is for now? A little bit of panic, but don't panic and be patient, there's more information coming. This is going to get more defined every time, and, but is there a better encapsulation for the message for tonight, at least?
No, I, I have a few things to add, but, I mean, you're calling on the board, and I think that was a, a good summary. What are your thoughts at this point?
I think you're expressing apprehension about timing. And, you know, how, if, if we do have to make cuts, when is the appropriate time to do it? Because it's not just like you say, okay, we're going to make a cut and it's done. Because there are repercussions to whatever decisions we make that way, so.
It's one of the big things that we run into, the master scheduling. I mean, if we're talking about making cuts that affect scheduling, I feel like that was one of the reasons that we couldn't do some of the things that we've discussed in the past, was, well, the master schedule's already done, so guess what? We're now set for the year, and if we start moving pieces around, well, the reality is we can't. So how does this gel with that process?
Well, we'll go, go ahead. Anything else on that? Let me just say this, the, and I'm going to go back a little bit to common with David said. Yes, we are early on in the process, and I know kind of historically, districts have underestimated revenue, overestimated expense, and isn't everything wonderful? And we're in a new day where, where we're trying to get that closer. And I, I think what we're concerned about, and I'll call it a danger, is we wouldn't want to start arbitrarily pulling things out of expenditures or adding things in revenue that creates in the end a disastrous picture. But, and I think that's where Chris and I have spent our time, that obviously, we need to get it closer. On, on the issue, and maybe, actually, I like the term, an expenditure hit list. Maybe we do need to work a little bit harder on that. As you know, I've asked the board's permission to go in a consultant to take a look at where some of those issues are. I didn't know necessarily that we would be planning those for this coming school year, but certainly, certainly expenditures, what I'll call in the big areas of expenditures, will need the serious look. So if we need to move that up, and, and we'll move it up. But the other thing that I said to the board is, I don't want to bring you what I would call pie in the sky cuts. You know, I, I, I think there has to be some strong basis in reality. We can do it this way, we can make an adjustment that way. So I think it's kind of where, where we are. This, moving it up, I think it's a real challenge for us, but we will work on it. The other thing that I would suggest to the board is, every time I've been here and we've worked on the budget, David has always graciously, I mean, spent a day or part of a day with the three of us, totally taking a look at where we are now. Because of your background, and I've done that, as I said twice before, I think when Chris and I work with the team, as you call it, to make those adjustments, then we pull you in, and we start to pull that process down. But it's a complex process. You know, it's not pie in the sky cuts. It's looking at it accurately we can as, as revenue and expenditures, but not, not so, like, yes, we can anticipate this revenue, yes, we can anticipate cutting this expenditure. Because we do have a lot of uncontrolled costs.
I think that's, that's our challenge.
The points are all taken. I, I appreciate that, and I agree with everything you said.
Yeah, I think that we'll get there, maybe not as fast as the board wants us to get there, but I think we will get there, and that's our commitment to get there.
I, I certainly don't, never meant to suggest specifics in terms of doing anything in revenue or in expenditures. I look to our financial and educational leaders to help make these recommendations to the board. I would, I would, in, in hearing you talk, though, I'd, I'd ask this. Chris thinks that we won't have, we will have to use some of the fund balance this year, and I don't think that's an unreasonable observation. What's a reasonable amount? I mean, we can say anything we want in terms of programs and cuts and whatnot, but if we have to use a million dollars, is that too much? About a half a million. Maybe we can look at where we have to structure things with our resources, and then simply say, bring us a budget with no more than a half a million dollars use of, of fund balance, or less, and, and leave it to our administrators to make the calculations and the determinations as to how that's done. Because otherwise, we're going to find ourselves two years from now, and we've got to cut a million five, and we have no fund balance, and there's no discussion there. We just got to cut it. And I, no one wants to be in that position. I mean, that's, if I sound like a broken record and I keep pushing it, it's because I'm concerned about the board. Those of us will be sitting here three years from now. If I'm here, I, I don't want to have to face that. And I know no one else does want, wants to face that either.
I guess the only thing that, I mean, is my off-the-cuff reaction to that is, I don't want us to rush into an arbitrary number like that, at least right now, and what I would call, put us into a panic of saying, well, let's cut this and let's cut that, because that's not educational planning.
And that's reasonable.
Yeah, hopefully we'll get.
Is it reasonable, though, to then say, okay, without coming up with a definitive number, if the administration is going to ask the board to use an amount out of the fund balance to balance the budget, show us how we will avoid a negative fund balance in the future, given where we are with that budget and the path that seems to suggest? Would that be a reasonable thing?
Absolutely. And that's kind of what our plan is.
Okay.
Multi-year. Yeah, a multi-year, yeah. It's, it's, it's a long-range plan.
I think you guys are doing a great job, fully supportive of all of you, I mean, I really am. And I, you know, I, I asked Lauren, and also just to, you know, share my concerns, so you can help lift them from me.
No, and, and David, you and the board have charged us with what I would call extremely legitimate concerns, and we're not the only district. Even what I would call districts with, that produce a lot of revenue, you know, are facing the same types of challenges. In the end, we need to come to you with a solid plan. And I don't want it to be, this is the wrong word, but for lack of a better word, I want it, I don't want it to be haphazard, and I definitely do not want it to be what I would call unrhythistic. You know, so that, that's going to be a difficult challenge. We've been working on it, this team, Ed and I have been working on it, and we'll continue to see where, where we go with it.
Thank you. Thanks to both of you.
So we're going to go in.